Thank you. You did this. Sure. We have to prepare to brief today. Here you go. If you were to make public comment during the comment section, there's opportunity also to, but I don't want to fill out the one.
Yeah.
Speaking. Anna. Do you want to make sure yourself, ladies and gentlemen, make sure yourself all in silence. Dylan would move, yeah, please. Got one more question. Hey Keith. Good morning, sir. Good break.
That's fine. It's very good to have you on the phone. Custody.
Um, yeah, that's Chad. This is made it. I am my.
Where's Bert? You know what he does? It's a morning. I didn't say whoa. He was here.
Oh, fun.
I'm talking to him.
I know.
Connection established.
Make number.
We can withstand it all and see where it was.
Oh, he's in all. Oh, yeah. All right, now that Murchell has arrived, we can call this meeting to order. You're running on time. At thirty seconds. Don't want to start too soon. All right, so eleven o'clock and call it order. This meeting to order, we do have a forum present, all the commissioners and the judge of present. Uh, we do have, uh, is there anybody else? I have one, uh, person to sign up for public comments. Anybody else? Uh, Tim Meredith, would you like to? Yeah, and discuss.
I'm not Tim Meredith, South Bay, never before. I filled out a comment because, uh, being a workshop, my question was when y'all were having discussions, can we interject?
That is correct. Yes.
What I need to find out.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Next item is discuss purchasing subscriber units, radios per L three Harris contract. And I believe Mr. Pratt is taking the lead on this.
Yeah, I, I called this meeting for the purpose of them people there have been talking to y'all and y'all to ask questions, them ask questions, if y'all any questions to me, that's, that's why I called it and I was, I talked to a few of y'all, I talked to Andy and I've been getting phone calls from them, so we thought, let's set up a transfer back up. Kind of where I'm at, um. Y'all all received a copy of the radio pricing and purchasing and stuff that was sent out last week. You should have that available. And that's what's in the contract.
That's it.
Note, this is devil powers, powers, where is the radio provided? So received there, that, that, that been getting.
Uh, it's in, it's in the binder.
Binder. You want to say something? Go ahead.
All right. Not like your concern, uh, which I expressed into, uh, under commissioner, uh, is with, uh, I'm concerned for, for South Bay and that part of the part of it, but also for better count E S D number three, uh, in the account that when this takes place, um, a portion of the funds I understand are our last radios. Uh, we may get a portion of those radios, um, and do, we appreciate that, we know it's a gift. Uh, but then we also, uh, will probably have burdens of probably two hundred thousand or more dollars to our, um, E S D, uh, to, to, to outfit our, uh, equipment. Now, being largest volunteer fire department in the county, we have fourteen apparatus, we have four stations, we have an engine, a tanker and a brush truck in every station, so there are twelve apparatus. So we would have to, uh, more or less outfit more than half of that, uh, with these radios that are expensive radios. Um, and, and we, uh, we have that concern. Um, in the, in the long term, uh, concern we have is what's going to cost our E S D, uh, to continue to be able to keep these radios up and, uh, and, and be able to maintain these over a fifteen year period. Now, I understand in making the fifteen year period, uh, they're, they're taking care of in some kind of contract, but that doesn't cover the radios we would have to purchase on our own, I understand. So I'm not sure if I understand that correctly. But the radio y'all bought would be given to us and we would have the ninety nine dollar radios. But the, uh, upkeep of the system, I understand it's going to be shared, uh, between the, the fire departments, um, and the commissioner's court. So these are questions that we how, um, to try to get answers to in anticipation of what our E S D is going to spend on this and, and therefore keep us from buying that rest. But she's been two hundred thousand dollars on radios right up front. And then you've got continuous, I don't know how much a year, but continuous, uh, funds throughout the years, for fifteen years. That takes away from our fire department being able to purchase what really needs by fires. Questions?
Well, currently what's in the P O would be for your fire department is a hundred and ninety one thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and sixty nine cents worth of radio.
Yes, sir.
That's a, and no, these numbers were taken back when we done the radio contracts that are well over a year old. Right, that's what's in the contract.
Mm-hmm.
That's a mobile for each apparatus.
Right.
That's three handhelds for.
Engines.
And engines, two for brush truck, one for command unit, which is basically.
Yeah, so then we have a couple more for each agent. We have one more, we have two for tigers.
Well, there'd be one, one handheld on that. The minimum handheld on a breast.
Tankers and a brush truck.
Brush truck was two.
That's two, but then two for an inch.
Three, three.
Three for an inch, okay. And then we wanted to outfit, um, our apparatus with two radio. Um, there's a cost there. We don't know that that would be what we would have to do, Chad, but that's where we're at now.
I understand.
Two radios.
And the goal of these regular purchase wasn't to put a handheld on every fire. It was to give you the amount of radio you needed. Yeah.
But the safety of our firefighters would have to put, not one on every firefighter, but we would at least have to have five or two. So that everybody out there could be safe. So maybe the cost to us might be two hundred thousand dollars or the hundred ninety one, I was figuring that you had provided for about half of what we need. Uh, maybe you're providing for sixty five percent of what we need. There'll still be, if it's a hundred thousand dollars that we have to do that. Um, and then the, what do you expect the cost to the fire departments on the contract? Y'all have that, or y'all just going to do that? Or is that going to be shared to the departments?
As far as maintenance, no people radios, the radios of the county purposes has got a three year warranty that starts at acceptance of the radio system. Beyond that, it's.
It's.
Department's responsible to take care of.
We, I, I understand that on the radio, but on the service contract for six years, what are you looking at there?
That we haven't put together yet.
Okay.
Well, with the service contract wouldn't involve them because we're going to be donating the radios to you.
So, so my question is, my question is, we're going to be using these radios with this system. Um, are y'all going to keep the system up? We keep the radios up after three years, but y'all will be keeping the system up that has to be completely revamped in seven years. That's my question. Do y'all even know that yet?
We have a maintenance service agreement that covers the cost for the seven year, the fifteen year upgrade.
Right, right.
The question is whether we're going to pass part of that off to your tax.
That's what I knew.
Has not been addressed yet. And that's the question.
So I didn't know if this workshop was going to be able to figure that out yet or more, if it gets voted on and guess, if we're going forward, maybe you figure out what the, uh, there is in the, the service area, you want to ask?
Question for y'all.
Well, you know, my idea was, and I think I told you this, is you get the radios.
Yes, sir.
And you probably need to get the, the most versatile, less priced radio. I don't think you need to be on system and call that.
I, I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay.
But once you get these radios, then it's going to be up to you forever.
Right.
To take care of them.
Okay, and I'm understanding that. What I'm not understanding is the system administrative.
Right.
If you would go there, administrative part is all of the, the hardware, the backspace, the warranty and all that.
Right.
Um, we're out here on this side.
Right.
And we're doing the radios and we understand the radios we get from y'all, we have to take care of them after three years. Of course, they're not warranted through y'all for three years, but through Harris.
Right.
And if we buy some, they should be warranted through Harris for three years.
Yes.
That's us. We got that. We have radio go down, we come to y'all and say a thing.
Right.
But it's this back. How many thousands of dollars that y'all are going to have to spend through the years to keep the system going? Now, I'm, and I'm asking, do we have to contribute in keeping the system going? Or are y'all going to just keep the system going?
You're saying if you use a system, you're going to have to contribute. You know, I don't, I think it's down the road.
Right.
Damn, I, I don't.
Well, I'm not.
You know, uh, I don't even know if we, I don't know if we can afford all this shit. You know what I'm talking about?
And that's why I'm saying if y'all can't go be able to afford it.
Right.
Are we going to be able to afford it? And this workshop is kind of where.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's what we need to bring all this up there.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, the answer to that is I, I, I don't know what, whether we're going to be able to afford this or not.
Okay.
It's not the, the sustainability of it.
The sustainability, and if y'all can't sustain it, you know, what happens? You know?
So if this question is related, your question relates to maintenance service agreement, which is what keeps the system functioning.
Which I think you've already got a, a setup for your service agreement, I understand.
The.
That you do a seven year upgrade, um, on the hardware.
And then we do another.
Maybe the fifty. And, and that's where I'm trying to get, and I'm, I'm, I know I'm reaching way out. But the E S D is going to have to do this, and I'm just trying to, to see for them whether we're going to be charged for that system. That's a, that's a question we've got, um, and I, you know, sure understand, you might not can answer that today, but I wanted to question all of it. So y'all know what we're coming.
A lot of people refer to the question you're asking is airtime on the radios.
Okay.
You have the radio and you pay so much per radio or a blanket so much for department operating system. And that's what you're asking, because we're going to take the maintenance service cost and split amongst the taxing agents is what it's asking.
Split of time of what?
Split amongst the users, the taxing.
So therefore then the S possibly we could ask, uh, yearly fees in our home is.
And that's the question.
That's what our E S D needs to know is if we're going to have to, uh, share in this.
Yeah. I, I thinking that we ought to just turn you all aloof once you get the radios and you, you have to negotiate with, with Harris.
For Harris?
Nothing.
For random?
Yes.
That, that's, that's a given.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm done there.
What are you talking about?
It's the, it's the airtime and the system, uh, that is installed for this airtime to be used. And towers and stuff like that. I've got us two radios that I have connected to, you know, I paid three hundred and something dollars a unit, pay on their system. For ready, I think it's one time that's, uh, you know, you have to pay for the towers, you have to pay for the, I used to call it radio time, I don't know. They own system, system. It's actually a University of Texas system. I pay three hundred and something dollars per video, per year, per year.
See, they're part of the tax law system, listen, be on tax law, and they charge you so much per year, per year to operate the system. We purchased our own system and own. We don't have to pay anybody else, we just got to pay Harris for the service contract. And a lot of people will take that service contract price and they'll divide it over the radios on the system and say, whoever's got a radio, you pay X amount per radio, is that's what the division is.
Okay.
And that's where he's coming from with that is how that works out. You can do it by the radio, you can do it by the agency, depending on how you work it out. And that's what he's asking, are we going to absorb the entire maintenance service agreement cost? Or we going to share it with the other users of the radio system? And that's the decision of the court.
That's money that they would have budgeted in, 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 I'm not being silly, but they would take it away from us to, to budget that for God. You see, just like right now, they have to budget an amount to pay the, uh, a graceful district that is money that they take out of the tax dollars to pay them, but it's also tax dollars that South and Vance, uh, comes out of the overall budget of South and Vance. Uh, the E S D, but it keeps it from going to the, to the fire.
That's your collection rate. They, they, they charge you to collect your taxes for.
Yeah. Yeah, they do. Heaven. Oh, forget that. Anything else? I think I, I asked a question that I wanted to know about. Um, my E S O, E S D board president is here also, so, uh, he's got something to say. Well, then in talk, but hopefully I'll cover what we're looking at, our concerns.
Mr. Pratt, you, well, you're using the, the account of mobile or truck, the portal for, is that still? That, that's my, my question is, have we heard that there's going to be none? It's going to be what we talked about, is that, is that consistent for department or is that something specifically with those?
When we figured this, what we done, we called a department and got a apparatus list. And we got a rest list, we knew how many models we needed, we knew this type of apparatus, it's this many handheld, and we still did that.
That list from way back is still pretty close.
That list is what was put in the contract with Harris. That's what the P is currently on the B of.
I think my other question is going to be what he has, like the word, he said, being a bit right, as we, that's been, I felt like it just access being every year, we're upstairs, the comments that would, would need to be figured in, so.
One thing we're working on doing, which, you know, it's in the very early stages, there's a lot of work with Smith County, it's got to be done on that. We're setting up a gateway. And ideally what it would be was whenever y'all need to go to Smith County and they need to come to y'all, our dispatch notify this dispatch, hey, they're on this air option, and they would patch on again. That would eliminate the need for radios to pay tax. Now, like I said, we're in a very early stages of those.
I understand you guys have thousands for miles to, to, to cover it in the agency, and I do a hundred percent understand that, and I don't, I mean, you're, you're just following this. And you're just going, and the van's kind of a weird situation as far as the volunteer fire, because we're one of the few that don't have an S D line. But we do have a city that, that funds the fire service, so the city taxpayers, the property taxes, those that are funding a hundred fifty square miles of fire pitch. So the city is buying tankers and brush trucks and all the things that the city doesn't need to buy those fires. But we have water wells drilled and we need to just, if, you know, like you said, if we have to buy those radios, that's one less fire for we're going to buy to go to the county. I understand it's kind of a balance. My, my main question today is with the, the account, the account of radios.
On the police department, what we done, we asked how many positions you had. And we figured a handheld for each officer, and then we figured a mobile for each call. So those numbers match.
Like for, for, we didn't need thirty quarters, you know, we're going to thirty five, we have thirty four in our office. So, uh, I understand you didn't need five, ten portals per truck, I think, because I just want to know now what the, what counts.
Uh, you did discuss the cost per radio, uh, go to the violence, uh. My question is, for the department, I guess, we're a pretty good size, we've got, like I said, four brush trucks, I believe five, six fire attendants. When we go to divide that up, all these aren't going to use at the same time, it doesn't. I, I, my question would be, are there different ways to divide this up where it's not per radio that we own, or the department has as far as cost goes? But maybe how much is you, how about the system do you?
I was trying to just give an example so I understand what airtime is based on what Pat was talking about. The court's not talking about anything like that as to how that would work, that, that hasn't been discussed yet. That was exactly how you could do it. Another way would be just a blanket per agency, and that's just the court chooses to charge. And the court hasn't discussed it yet, so I would just give an example of what airtime meant, just to kind of so they understand what Pat was talking about and understand what Tim was asking.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
How, how would the, uh, fire department that are not in S service district pay, like, Whitton and like, uh, how, how would they pay?
Yeah, how would you?
Yeah, they could. That's the thing.
I think they're going to afford about a radio against the price that we got, that's the cheap.
Let me, uh, let me give you, this is Keith Pearson talking now, not this court. Mike came to me, Dell Corbett, way back there, seven years ago, and said, we need a, we need a new radio system, March radio system, uh, there. Motorola came up there and said, we can give y'all a radio system for around five hundred thousand dollars. Both we were broke. We said, I mean, you might, you might as well, you might as well say five million dollars. And, uh, so then this grant comes along that we get, and then all of a sudden, these radios go from five hundred thousand dollars to five million dollars. Now, time we get the radio, time we get the tires up, you, you're looking at around ten million dollars. And the way Keith Pearson is right here, we have got to cut the cost on this, but we're going to have to scrap it because we can't afford it. We can't afford it today, and we can't afford it going in the future. So, and I apologize to y'all because I tried to have this meeting two years ago. We've got to figure out how we're going to do it, on how, if we're going to share the cost or whatever. Well, that's where I'm at, we've either got to cut the cost of this thing or we're going to have to cut the whole thing. And I don't want to cut the whole thing. I want the thing to be out there for y'all to have. The whole deal was for Van Tech County going into it was to get a system for our sheriff's office to protect our employees and a system that the fire departments and the other agencies can use and get on when they can and when they're ready to. But, uh, it's, so I don't, I, I don't, I want the, the safety of everything, but this, this got down, we've got to figure this out. We're not doing our taxpayer, uh, legitimate deal, but this cost has got enormous. And I don't know how we're going to pay for it. That's what this is all about. We got to put out, we've all got to put our, our thinking caps on and figure out how we make this thing work, uh, where, where everybody can survive. That's just the way I feel.
I'm Martin Shaw, and I'm the president of E S D three, this is, I'm sorry, that, now. I share the same concern as you spoke.
Yes, sir.
The way I understand this money allocation is that the towers first, and whatever's left goes into the radio. And I read the contract that says, if you buy listed what this contract says, pay the dollar on the price. It may go, that's what it says from the bottom line, uh, it's better than other.
It better not.
And, and, and if it does, then the impact of us here, our department business, our allocation of radios is going to go with number of radios will go down and prices will go up. And then there's what we got to supplement, and, you know, my job is to fund this thing. And that's a, a charge all by itself, but these total volunteer departments, what am I getting this? I mean, lottery, I mean, how they going to fund that?
Yes, sir.
That, that's, I'm, I'm looking at it from a financial, that's, that's my.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. How much money have, has been dedicated or P O to the, uh, radio system right now?
As of today, you got eight hundred seventy eight hundred eighty thousand. But you have, you still have your top project for.
But the radios is included in, but the towers are not included.
Towers.
You add the towers, you're up to nine and a half.
When you add the top project, you're, you're all of your, you're, you're, the only thing you have left in the country. Three and a hundred of it.
We haven't got the taxpayer dollars.
We've just been, uh. Right, well, that is taxpayer dollars, but it's, it's a grant to taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, it's not. And does that, have you subtracted out what the cog grants paid for out of that?
Yeah.
That's where we're, that's where.
Excuse the phrase, guys. That's where we're at.
Chad, it's not understanding that in conference we have for our prepared is including every radio, that's correct.
We discussed today are already including that.
And, and I'm, I'm in disagreement on some, some of this thing, they say that the old radio system is going to go down. I don't see where we can ever go, go away with the radio system we got right now, because there's counties all over the state of Texas that use these old analog systems, and if we ever need them to come help us, we're going to have to have systems that they can patch on to. And so you're, we're going to keep that old system going, so that every radio you got right now is still going to work, I hope. I'm talking about to fire departments, uh, you, you still going to have communication.
The intent on the existing system was not to take it down. It was to utilize it, as you were saying, for interrupt purposes. So we're, instead of the towers being linked together, they were each functioning independently. So whenever an outfit agency came in to work in an area that could go to that talent, have communication with the operation of that area.
Well, I didn't want y'all to think, man, if, if we do this thing and something happens and we can't get the mount of radios that everybody's going to want, that you're going to be out there with no communication. That you're gonna be out there with no communication.
That's what Henshaw and Coglin County and said, who, since they got their first deals on the old system, they just keep them.
Can't be eaten.
You didn't, what did you do?
They uh, you know, they just will try to keep both systems running. But they, within a year, they have to have a new system, they've already let them go with cause of service issues and stuff like that.
Can't give you a ten thousand dollar analog console.
I made a same statement, Tim, keep that open and protect it right. Like realistically, we'll be able to do that.
My concern also, um, in in the old system, well, if if. We continue with the old system, will the sheriff's department continue to utilize the old system? So say, uh, we're out here and and within midway growing up. We're that could afford a radio, but still have their own system, uh, working. And not to the best visibility, but working. Uh, would they still be able to communicate us, would we still be able to communicate with uh, our own uh, system? Where we have uh, repeaters that the sheriff's department uh, supports. And we have a repeater of our own uh, that we support. Uh, that's, that that's my concern there, if if we're not gonna be able to afford it. To communicate on the new system, can we still communicate to the sheriff's department on the old system?
But tha- that's what the Harris in our, or they're telling us that we can't.
Well, that goes back to what we're talking about with the existing repeater becoming era. You don't want repeater channels and patch it to an operation channel. But as far as what you currently do, if you go to the simplex channel, deep fire twenty one. It would be next to impossible to try to patch that through to the new system, just due to the, it's not gonna reach it. So you.
All of our same, I understand, though that is still gonna be viable, one on your radio for a problem. Uh, but I was talking about fire dispatch channel, um, and and even the the S O. Uh, where the bay uh, would be able to still use the old V H F system. And my question would be. Can the the dispatcher, in their new console, I guess their new console, the V H F, because that's what we're talking through now?
We're currently on, and the ability to talk on the old. Channels would be available through the interop, where we're setting it up, so with consoles being capable of them getting. You won't be able to time the old S O channel and the new S O channel, you're just gonna bring every problem you got with the old system over to the new.
I'm saying that, I'm just, I'm just kinda seeing, you know, the regret, riddled thing. Uh, just all of a sudden, we got all the radios, and now everybody's old stuff don't talk to the S O anymore, or something like that.
Ideally.
S O still listen to it.
If if we buy these radios in the contract, there would no reason, no reason to monitor the old channel. Everybody had the ability to talk on the new system.
And that's what I'm trying to ask, so personally, our mobiles and and everything we have now would be personally useless. Unless we wanted to use them on the deep fire channels.
Would it? But then they wouldn't talk with people that's on the new radios.
Now, we wouldn't talk with people on the regular, but will the S O dispatchers talk to us on that system?
I would sure hope so.
They're supposed to, and I've asked that question to Harris and. What's the other?
Well, no. Now, let let me explain something where you're there, once the new system's online and fully functional, people are owning. In order to stay on the old system and the new system, now we've got to monitor everything we're monitoring now. Plus, we gotta monitor everything we're gonna be monitoring in the future. That's why.
Got enough help to do that.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's gonna be an issue in dispatch to try to monitor all of them at the same time.
If you stay on both systems, then you're gonna be paying two service contracts. Or or you have problems paying with the one, I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna pay for this. And then we're gonna add another service contract to the, or even the one that we got.
Is there a service contract now for the old system?
No, thanks. We're paying as we got it and fixing it.
Well, I mean, we own it, I mean, if something go breaks on it, we fix it.
Right, that's, that's what I'm talking about. Not ongoing every month or every year of service contract on that old. When it breaks, you gotta fix.
We'll be trying.
It comes to the point, it's broken, it broke so far, it's not fixed.
Cause we've, there's sort of a contract, we'll be paying to fix upkeep upkeep on the old system, plus have a contract on this system, now we're paying. We're we're paying twice for radio, or or the for the systems.
And ideally, when the new system comes online, the only people that'll have to talk to someone that's not on it. Will be on the northern end of the county, talking to Raines and Wood County, everybody else is looking at this.
Most of the counties don't have a problem in the exam, but if they get into the other counties.
That's where we're putting the gateways on the tower in Grand State, the tire in Will's Point, so we could patch our channels. We got enough overlapping coverage in the wood and rains, we cover almost all the rains and half the wood, just with overlapping coverage. So outdoor coverage, mobile coverage, we'll be able to stay on our system and just pass through to their, their repeater and work with them over there. And if they come here, they can, that's what we was looking at. The old system is going into a standalone repeater mode for interop, when they come over here, they switch to that channel, and we can patch it to an operation channel then. Where they can communicate with us, on the south end, everything down there is P twenty five, you should not have to talk to anyone.
We're gonna be P twenty five solid down there.
Got a question, the mobile repeater being supplied to the apparatus, or I'm not called repeater, uh, the mobile radios. Being supplied apparatus of those can be a little bad.
No, sir, everything we're buying is submount.
Cause the portable radios will not switch over to V H F.
No, only operating within the system, because if they go with it, there's no reason.
Only reason I ask is for service, uh, especially when you bring in the air by other, they still use V H F for operation.
And with them, we can patch them through, most likely, especially if they're in the air, you're gonna get a signal across to you. And you still have all your existing stuff, that's yours, they had the contract removing existing radio, we said, dude, that's that's their radios, we're not touching them.
We'll leave, everything we got with V H F radio, it's certainly handled, it's like our, the V H F activated, you know, it's. Fires need their man, so V H F, you know, even if some twelve year old Chinese hacker takes down here's a computer, we still call for a car. At worst case scenario, even even if they're in the fall, V H F radios, so. I think it'll be available as far as there's a lot of life, and being able, of course, I guess now. I I have a question, I guess, maybe, was anywhere in this, was there any allocation of the radios or communication equipment, this uh. Is an emergency demand bus thing that's still a name?
We got a separate grant through the C O G for that, and I already have the radios on.
I mean, it's not really a dog in the sun, but I I did have a suggestion, and I've mentioned it a couple of times in other meetings. Uh, the the number of radios that y'all are giving to the fire departments is is they're they're saying high ample. I understand, but there there's a checkbook, and I also understand that, also. But Constable Burton, when he, when we first got our system, Constable Burton went on eBay and gave a hundred ninety nine dollars for a handheld. Digital radio and talked us for a long time, if they need two or three more radios, it's nothing wrong with the used radio. It does not have to be a Harris radio to talk to y'all system, it just has to be a digital seven hundred, eight hundred meters. So if they need two more radios, three more radios, spend five hundred dollars. And then they'll get two or three more, whatever they need, don't have to have a five thousand dollar radio to talk.
We have never made a requirement that you buy the Harris radio. There are requirements for the radio to work on a soundcast system. Now, as far as an eBay radio, there is a concern there about the radio itself and what's on it. As far as what we're being told from Harris and other agencies we've worked with. When it comes to refurb radios, that needs to be from a manufacturer, so Harris, so Motorola needs to have brought that radio in. Refurbish it, clear it, reset it, and put it back out, it don't need to be just. John Doe on eBay has got a radio for sale, here you go, because, bro, we know they love to something on it, they can get our system. And we don't want, my understanding is eBay radio to base the computers. So buying an eBay radio will be like buying an eBay laptop and putting it on your network, what kind of risk do you take? So that 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 we're not planning to do, as far as refurbished radios, as long as it's Motorola has refurbished and said, it's clear and good to go. Or if Johnson refurbished and says good to go, or whatever other brand, and it meets the requirements work on the system. We're not gonna have any phase ones on the system, we're not gonna take our system down to act power. But other than that, they should be able to get it to work, they'll lose some of the. Those whistles that was thrown in by Harris that we have, but as far as keying up and talking to over.
Are they gonna set their system for priority, or for so that we bought uh, another new brand radio? Uh, is there something in their system that wouldn't allow it to work on their system, or they do do it for our type stuff?
I'm interested in your question, I saw an answer, if you buy a different manufacturer radio. It should key up and talk the same as the Harris radio, now you're gonna lose some functions, for instance, although your push talk GPS won't work as a Harris product owner. It's still GPS through P twenty five, it just won't ever tell you key up. The uh, Wi Fi capability for the radio to switch to Wi Fi mode and communicate back in, you won't have that ability, because that's a Harris feature. As far as just keying up and talking, it should key up and talk, and it shouldn't be no pushing your way, because it's not a Harris radio, it shouldn't do that at all. And we oversee and throw out that system setup and program being, so we should be able to ensure when you key up, you get equal opportunities as anybody else.
With this system, this is, you say you don't have a dog and hunt, this system puts you on. Puts Canton on, wouldn't communicate with you with a new system, correct?
Yeah, we do, but we can pass it out, we have to.
Yeah, you do have dog and park, because I've already had some city officials in city Canton saying. If you're gonna give the city of Will's Point eighty two thousand dollars, and the city of Grand Slane eighty two thousand dollars, and the city of Van eighty two thousand dollars. Why are you gonna punish the city of Canton, because they've already bought their system, why ain't I getting eight two thousand dollars?
My dog and hunt service, we're very fire part.
So this price, and you're just for Harris radio.
This is what's in our contract with Harris, so this is through Harris, but the pricing we got reduced down, you see there's three lines of where. So what anybody else on the top of the street would go buy one of these radios for is five thousand five hundred seventy five. We got it reduced down our contract to two thousand six hundred sixty nine dollars.
And that's the price we can get.
That's the price you can get it for.
But we still have an answered question, if we do the radios, how is. Man volunteer fire department, or Goodweather Fire, volunteer fire department, how are they gonna, how are they gonna pay for the maintenance of these radios?
That was the fine maintenance, so as far as if we buy a radio. Granted, we got a three year warranty for any radio bought in our contract, and after that, it's gonna be their responsibility, if they need a new radio in the future to buy it, or breaks, they'll have to fix it. But that's where they are with the V H F radio system now.
And with the service agreements, that we decided, if we're gonna allocate it to the, to the cities, or is the county gonna pay for it? Or is, do the city and the county pay for it, and the volunteers do not have to pay for it, because they don't have the funds? Or how do we divvy that up? I mean, I guess the question is, how are we gonna pay for it?
It's simply, I I think we're getting to, there's two questions, and they kind of keep going back and forth, I think someone was talking about. When you say maintenance, they're talking about the actual physical radio, it probably even had, had a screen rate with the, that can even have piece of equipment. You know, these, I think someone was talking about the access fee, and I think we kind of get those two.
I was somebody that access.
Access fee is something that's gonna go, it's gonna hire somebody from now on.
Yeah.
Which this other will be gonna hit or miss, you know, that's.
For the volunteers to be able, I think, to pay for, like, what you said, you have the antennas and just a little minor stuff here, what about the big piece of cable? How are we gonna pay for that?
Well, how much is it?
Four hundred twenty seven thousand dollars a year, that comes up a little bit more, five million over the twelve year period after the three year warranty. So we're looking at five million over twelve years.
Now, one thing I was putting together that I hadn't had a chance to present to court to break it up now. The reason why the maintenance service agreement looks so high was the way we've done the contract with them. We locked in pre Bidenomics inflation pricing. For the whole fifteen year, for them to do everything. We also put in contract the ability to downscope anything out of that maintenance service agreement, we wanted to downscope out, and no additional cost or penalty to us. In return for that, they put in, okay, but if you scope something out and scope back in, we scope in it, whatever the present day pricing is. So the reason this looks high is that's every possible bell and whistle they can provide in making service agreement. Now, we fully anticipate that the people we've hired to oversee the system will be able to pick up. Two hundred dollars worth of those services. And at the end of the three year warranty window that Harris is taking care of, where our men are going out there with them, when they do every service, every inspection, every check. And they're going to schools and training, they should be able to take over pretty much everything but climbing the tower. And that reduces it down to around two hundred and fourteen thousand dollar a year, and the bulk of that price is a two refurb. We got the first refurb locked in at eight hundred and ninety something thousand, and we got the second one locked in at one point two million. And that second was fifteen years from now, and y'all can imagine what would actually cost to refurb fifteen years from now, if we had to pay for it at the time. This also includes all software upgrades. And installations of those, so we don't have any surprise figures on that. That's where it comes from, so when you hear the four hundred thousand dollar figure, like I said, that was locking in. Cheap pricing on everything, knowing we would downscope when we got there. But the idea was, at the end of year three of the maintenance, the free warranty, when we got ready to go in and do the contract. We'd downscope where we're gonna forward, unless we're.
Does your contract start at the end of the three years of this complete?
The maintenance service?
Yeah.
It starts at the end of the three year warranty period, the pricing for the first three years is already factored into the original contract.
Excellent, at the end of three years, we start contracting, we've got seven years from that.
No.
Were refurbished for four years to be refurbished?
We got four years for first refurb.
So you're starting this contract, and and when you buy them. Uh, and they're they're warranted for three years, and then for four years up to seven. In contract, and then the seventh year is in the the refurbished contract, and then from the seventh year to fifteenth year is also in there. And it's fifteen years from the time you say yes.
When we say, when we accept the system, when we start the clock. And you have the fifteen year run for the two refurbishes. And then you got the maintenance service, look at your own, the maintenance service agreement goes past that last refurb. We got, that need more years on it, so it just includes those two refurb.
What is y'all's opinion, y'all are gonna be the ones using them?
We're like, what are y'all's opinions? The commissioner just said a man handling, and said, we need something, we're the same thing, we need something. Right now, we're using the system that's thirty five percent usable, especially when we get in the south end of the county. But. Then we need to use the dollars for it, I don't, I I don't know if there could have been a a different brand, uh, a different system. Uh, that have been looked into, uh, I I I don't know that, I I wasn't the only first, and I mean, I heard. Um, and the fact that, yes, uh, plates, fire, ambulance. With ambulance coming already, but our men out there, uh, in in a critical situation. Need to be able to talk, and at this point, you can't get on them talking. Especially if they happen to end up down on eighteen sixty one in the south end of the county, close to Eustis. Um, the the Walton area and stuff like that, so it's it's a pitch twenty two dog. And us too, we need something that is very credible. Um, we just don't know, we need one that is gonna cost this kind of money.
We put our R F P M, we had three respondents, if Johnson responded, Motorola responded, and Harris responded. And Harris was by far the cheapest, and offered way more product at the cheaper price.
And 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 they did, and probably still do. And probably still do, but in the beginning, uh, was really kind of before COVID. And what happened in between all of the decisions that had to be made from y'all. The workings that had to go through the course, had to go through the process, had to go through the lift. Well, in the lift of all that, what happened with pricing and, and then the economics. You know, so we're not probably, maybe we are, uh, at the price that you started out with at the beginning. But it's because you stayed after them to the point where they had to give up this discount.
Yes, but you just gotta remember, RFP was for a Cadillac system. What we've been on was for a Cadillac system.
Sure.
Is the mobile radio that's included in the bids on this, is that the XL one eighty five P?
Yes.
Where does that fit in in the radios that they offer?
The one eighty five P is the hand, one eighty five M is the mobile.
I know, but the handheld, what, what does that fit in in all the radios? Is that the best they have or is that?
It's the mid range.
Okay.
It's the one that's, what, it's the reason why we chose it is the one that's durable to, to hold up the police and firepower activity. The ones we looked at for Rowan Bridge is a, is just a forty five XL. And it's not designed to be something someone's life. If that radio breaks, that Rowan Bridge hand that can bang. If theirs breaks, they got trouble. And so it's, it's a mid range radio. The higher one is the two hundred and then actually for fire, they have a four hundred. And you don't want all that. That's a ten thousand dollar radio. So we, we come way down to this price on it. One eighty five XL. So it, that's where we're getting. And as far as the system we bought being a Cadillac system, what we went out RFP for. Was Chevrolet Scottsdale system. Just a base radio system. What Harris come in and threw into that passes is what made a Cadillac system. They originally responded to just a, a standard set of work truck. And then when we got into negotiations, they wanna make sure they won. And they threw the silver rod and the Cadillac functions on board.
How's DPS and Texas Department?
Their radios can be programmed to talk on our system. Okay, you know, has ever tried to charge the state for maintenance on a radio talking. So good luck. I don't think that that has happened, but they, you have to go through DPS and we have to give them the program. And then it takes them about a year and some change to get approved and put in the radios.
You know, you're, you're a touching system when you start saying that you're gonna charge these entities for. For providing service to them because the county, the county is charged with dispatching. The emergency call within the county. So it's gonna be pretty hard for fans and county to go to. Any one of the cities and say, oh, you know what? You gotta pay us for this radio. We're gonna say, no, you gotta get ahold of us when you got an emergency. That's your problem.
If you went to them, the fire department, they should have called them like, well, that fifty thousand dollar piece for maintenance. About the emergency. And then in that, in that point, I would say like their budget, annual budget.
And then what you gonna do when, when two of them say I ain't gonna pay it? So. That's what I'm talking about. That whole rat, guys.
Keep in mind, tax warrants is not a publicly. It's not a, a public, it's not held by a tax, tax warrant, a private company. And they bill, because they make money. That's how they earn their money. They don't just bill to cover their expenses. They're a privately owned company and they make money by billing. And that's why when you, every time we try to work with them, you know, they come up with some consciousness for radios while we were working with the gateway option. Well, if we do gotta pay per radio, we just gotta pay for two gateway radios. And then we can talk to them.
But I think that's what most of them, most of their annual. You know, the fine rates, the cost of the year. Time for this. I think that's what most of them know, but they didn't figure in their levels.
I saw it's. You know, you're not taxing these, they make, they make money off the taxes. What about the volunteers? They don't. Their money is donations and there's no way they.
Your volunteer, your volunteer brothers came and bought the radios.
But my understanding is that, that is my question. Is the annual maintenance? And hey, y'all wanna buy that out? Well, how much, how many people is gonna have to pay? How much everybody, the, those, what they did, Grand Slum people? How much they're gonna have to pay? And I think that's what they really need to know for. Their future budget.
And are they willing to do that? And are they willing to do that also? That is a number.
Well, uh, e- either they do it or either they contract with Harris on their own to provide maintenance.
Uh, no.
Stop talking about the.
The cities paying for the maintenance service. He's asking if they don't pay part of it.
Yeah.
And that's our maintenance service contract.
Right.
And we charge them for a portion of what they're asking. So they can't go to Harris and contract with it. It's our.
So the, the question is, yes, and you wanna know what we'll pay. First of all. The numbers is to give you a summary of what we've discussed so far. The county is spending seven million dollars for the radio equipment and radios. Paying three million dollars for the tower systems. And then we will be paying five million dollars. For maintenance for year twelve or four through twelve or fifteen. For twelve years worth of maintenance. Okay? Uh, and. I believe the county. Considers it an investment and it's a good investment for our first responders. But we need some help. We need the fire departments in the cities to share in that investment. And that's, that's the question that we haven't resolved yet is how much are we gonna share? And, and or ask to be shared in that process. So, but you know, and then you always get to the question, you know, what, what is a life worth? Because a lot of times is it gonna be a life issue when, when they're out there responding to something and they can't get. Uh, response. From the system. So again, questions we have and we haven't, don't have an answer for yet. Basically, do you have a question?
Well, I was kinda worried might say in your. I am one of the ones that pushed my head in gear. I actually did here in twenty thirteen. And I knew instantly that the radio system that we have was the next. Uh. Which I didn't want to call y'all now, that money situation is better and y'all are actually considering delivery. But I've had my breath for all these years, uh, with the communications that we have. Uh, it just the thing that we, we, we do a lot of that first responders, individuals. Uh, and when a gentleman sit here is seventy five percent. I probably would feel that high, uh. With their success with the radio now, I would say about fifty percent. The share problem is a little different from everyone else. Because we're responsible for the total. Of eight hundred fifty nine square miles. And that's what puts us in a difficult situation. But we are, we get areas now that we respond where there are communications. Uh, which when there's nothing to do with us, yes, that puts our deputies in danger. But if we cannot communicate with our deputies when I did that, that was then the danger where I was not able to respond at all. Uh. It's just one of those things that. See life lost, all of it. And then again, y'all put it down to a hundred dollar. Uh, and that's something that y'all gotta consider. Uh, and like I said, I am so happy to see y'all moving this forward, which I know at this time. The county said, I want better shape what it. Or shape it is now in my opinion. Uh. It's just that our primary, we always want participation for the counties. Uh, for the entire county. But most of the, they and Grand Slum and the fire departments, it's getting to a point where we can't completely be paid with them. Uh, to get emergency, she wants in there. Uh, Sheriff has been before each that just like. My, we. Uh, if we can play it, we all, uh, if we just kind of emphasize some of the things that we're, we're going through now. It's a short, probably.
Mid to half, some route to get to the field.
You play this guy.
I'm playing on here.
Real quick, it seems like. Tell me about this, the plan. We, as the court, need to get a number on how much it's gonna cost. And then I think when we have that number. I don't know if we need to reach out to the cities, the city council and talk with them, hey, it's gonna be this much to have a discussion with each individual city? Or is that what we need to do? To get for us, number one, to get a number and then number two, presented to, to the taxing instance.
That would be a start. And I mean, that's, that's my question all along is where is the plan showing and you know, uh. The number you can come up with somehow. I know, I know that's. From talking with y'all, uh, or knowing the amount of money, uh, but. Letting y'all figure out over that period of time. I know Karen.
I think Chad got a PowerPoint presentation or something with how much money is gonna cost, what we're getting, and then we can go present that to. The cities. And say, hey, we would like X amount of dollars for y'all to, for this. And then we can, we can talk from there. Maybe we'll get something I mean, and then. Just go from there. But have, we, we have to get a number. And then we have to present it to the city. And in that process, I'll find out how much y'all can afford. Right. And then the excess could be distributed. Right. I think that's where we need to go from here.
That's on the maintenance service agreement.
It's gonna be very close to fifty thousand.
Everybody's exposure is a little different. It's an ISD with two radios, but some. Building heaters, their exposure is different than midway five radios, south end with, you know, a bunch of radios and cordables and. So everybody's got a little bit of different levels of, of exposure, of system. Utilization, I guess.
And that would have to go into the consideration too.
We don't have ISDs considered in here, do we?
I see a lot factored in.
Okay.
P Ds, U Ds.
Uh, this one too, you know. Our radio is three hundred.
Our radio, sure, every, every radio, sure, under the access that's.
So you're saying the city of Vans, they had a hundred radios. Indeed. Uh, I'm not good at math. I graduated from Vans. Ten radios at three hundred, uh, be three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I just know obviously our, our system, our, our utilization of the system is gonna be more like, like the midway fire, Earl's fire, we're probably gonna. Be using it more. So I don't know that, that we would make fifty three thousand and they would make fifty three thousand.
Right.
But I just want more than that.
Is the, let me ask you something. But as a service contract, is that gonna include if. They have problems with the radio itself? Then Harris would take care of the radio problem?
No.
Well, tell me exactly what the service.
The service contract is what we pay to maintain the power sets.
Okay.
That's what that is.
Okay.
And so what you do is you take that house and that's what the discussion is, are we gonna disperse any part of that cost down to these other agencies that are on the system?
So the, it doesn't have anything to do with the maintenance of the equipment?
No, sir. This is all about maintaining the tower sets. Equipment that's on the tower.
Like electronics.
Hmm. It has nothing to do with the individual radio.
So what, what happens if they have problems with the radios?
They have it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The first three years of the war.
Got you. All right, you ready, Nelson?
If we give you what's here on this, this is for Leslie. Uh, it was the even kind of parts already and I thought few people here of a very, very situation. Uh, what you're gonna hear recordings, one hour dispatch, what they, all their recording lines that came in, okay? Plus communication, they're gonna talk back on telephone, upgraded communications, all reported. There's this one hour dispatcher here. What's here, uh, gentleman did, about his family, he was suicidal. He went down to the Old Bethel Community Park there, across from church, they're about the same area. We know he's armed, he's got a handgun. We dispatch officer go down there, charge, go back and respond to the scene. You're, you're gonna make the contact, locate the vehicle, spark the shield. They're trying to locate, it's dark now at this point. They're trying to locate, you know, the subject is armed, he's suicidal. We don't know what, for what it's at that point. If he is gonna be seized, if it's gonna be, uh, suicide by a cop or an ambush, or things that could happen with an armed individual, officer's fine. It's completely dark. It was very ambient light, there was three lights, church around, but you're in a dark situation and single officer gets there, the second officer showed up. You're gonna get a radio traffic. You know, he's communicating from his mobile. He's being given off his car radio. And I want you to listen to this about a minute and a half before.
Go ahead, sixty. I'm just left and in, in the vehicle. We're, uh, looking in the vehicle right now. People can't look at power. So I got us the cell is in the vehicle, left there, look back.
Joe, like, uh, he, he was advised of that. He was gonna look for a power in the vehicle.
Okay, thank you. You think he's the one? Well, we had to send a team. For just looking, always take a follow and drive the vehicle.
Hello, I'm at the fire station just down the street. I just got up in there from Ben joy.
Okay. Well, you know, if I started to send a team, uh, it's not about four. Go ahead. Okay, sixty, I got that y'all searched the area to the tree line and y'all haven't had any luck yet. That was static and I got target. I'll hold off until one hating out there. Help out the drunk. Go ahead. Thank you.
That's from the old metal up there at the church.
Right.
And that's probably the highest spot down there, you know, getting back to communications. I'm just telling you, forty years doing this, there's a lot of things that I. You're looking for something, you get a call, you pull up there, it's out in the country, pull up and I mean, you're on top of this right there. What's going on? You got one opportunity, you get ready to go, you know, immediately, you, you be able to get a hold of him, hell, Mike. You got your hands where your scalp, somebody's sparking up, you need to get over here. That's your one shot, etc. So. I get the funny side of it too. This is. Which I'll deal with for, it was this way when I was here in the main, it's not just a camera. We need creative, we're just trying to figure out what to get it fixed. I appreciate you, I thought the time we get it back.
Off of the school districts. We might want to take that into consideration now. Uh, look, I'll, you value, there's concern a lot fast. Now, our schools have to have a home, uh, first on each campus. And they've also left it to the sheriff's office now that the sheriff has to make with all the school districts. We release flat the year to go over the state departments. And some, uh, generally get out of here. Now, the schools have to have some type of, uh, hitcher, a system that. Refuse directly to our dispatch, because they say, yeah, they may be reinstated. Uh, which is gonna create more work around for. Uh. So, yes.
All right. So what, what I take that we need to do is to come back. With a proposal. Uh, on what kind of, uh, service agreement we would institute. Uh, either after year one or year three. For to help, help us maintain the system in the future. And, uh, you know, I, I believe we, uh, we can do that. We can do that and we can figure out. How to, uh, work with each individual department on what they would do it. And, you know, maybe I, I like that idea of per radio or per license. Something like that. But, you know, the, the thing that we need to do is, is to check with other counties and find out how they're doing currently. What is? What, in other words, rather than this, uh, invent something new, find out what someone else has done and, and done it successfully. And then try to come back to y'all with that. Uh, in that regard. So. Is there anything? Is there anything? What I, what I'm afraid that the cities are going to say, say, hey, we pay taxes. You know? So why, why should we pay extra?
Think we have to get them informed.
So, you know, that, that's it. I mean, we can. Are we not giving them radios? Well, aren't they paying for it? I don't know. That hasn't been decided.
They weren't going to pay for the, they're not paying for the radios, they're paying, but we got to figure out a way, probably help the state with the service contract. But I think. It's like Judge said, but you can't put a dollar amount on the law, from what you just heard right there with what Joe just said. But I think if we got immunity for the town informed of what's really going on. They may be more advised to, to, uh, understand, hey, we do need this and we need to. We need to.
Well, if nothing else, give them time to prepare for it budget wise and, and not hit them up all at one time. To say in three years or at the end of the three year warranty time, this is, this is what we're going to start doing.
Yeah.
I, I've heard, uh, you know, the warranty in search contract, is this going to be locked in or are they going to say?
It's in the contract.
So for how many years?
Fifteen years.
So that's the bribe will be the same.
For fifteen years.
Five years.
It's broken down by year, like year one is X amount, year two, year three, year four, it's, it's, uh, there's a sheet somewhere we got just wrote down.
Josh later and say, hey.
No.
Paris can't.
That's why we locked it in. At the pre-biden inflation price and that's why we locked in everything we locked. That's why the contract looked so high. We locked in every option we had, knowing we intended to downscale it, but while let that price and get away. So we locked in four hundred and some odd thousand year average, because we locked in every option there. Knowing we planned to downscale it back when we get to that point in time. And that's why I was saying, with the training we've been through with Scott and Mr. Jones already. And looking through the breakdown descriptions of what each line item in the maintenance service agreement is, we expect to be able to easily back two hundred thousand dollars now that cost. Because it's just things we'll be able to take care of ourselves that, of course, they offer a highly inflated price for. So that's why I keep trying to remind everybody that, that four hundred thousand dollar figure, that was just us locking in cheap prices across the board. Knowing we had down scaled when we got there.
But, but there's still expense there, Chad, because we're going to pick up some of the labor on our end, so that's going to cover that. But whatever you, whatever you cut out on this hundred percent. Maintenance deal on little things, it's just going to cost you that, it's going to cost you that much one way or another, I promise you that. You're going to spend it, you're going to spend it out on, on, it's, it's like you deductibles, you get insurance policy with a real low deductible, you can get it with a higher deductible. You're going to pay it either way, either you deductibles or you're printing. And we got to prepare for it, what I'm saying. We can't just go into this blindfolded, so we'll, we'll see what happens. Uh, we, we've got to prepare for it.
Well, another, another thing is the towers that we are investing in are an investment in an asset. That's going to be at least, uh, thirty, fifty years in, in making and plus we have the opportunity. To make money off of them by allowing, uh, cell, cell phone companies or other internet service providers put their equipment on, it is designed. Uh, for that, to put multiple ones on there. So tha- that is some of the things, but we can't. Build that cost, that revenue we bring in into this factor because we, we don't, it's not guaranteed. We don't know what's going to happen in that regard, but hopefully that is going to help offset some of the costs.
I just prepared for this, I'm just, we're all doing. About how the cost a few years ago versus the cost now, the infrastructure is, is invisible, but they don't care. They care about this ten thousand dollar bottle, they don't care about this thirty dollar thing, they don't ever see that. Because they don't even know if it's water lines, anything like that. But the infrastructure is invisible to the boat, but the, the, the long we put it all, more expensive it is.
Great.
You know, we could have put this system in twenty five minutes. We've been, you know, but, but if we. I don't want to spend the money, we're running the half everybody else's money, uh, five, five, year and a half doing some other stuff that. The infrastructure is a enormous drain. Brain, almost getting financed and it's largely unappreciated, that's pretty much invisible.
Yes, sir.
That's fair.
Been a lot better off building that half million dollar deal seven years ago.
That million dollars seven years ago, I didn't, today's way it's going.
It is.
Yeah.
Not hard, man. It is ten million.
And that's the purpose of blocking it.
We got much to say, but we don't want.
All right, is there anything else? Yes, Tim.
Um, this is, of course, I, it's true. With what we've discussed here today, and y'all are going to get together and you're going to talk more about entities and, and various things. Tomorrow's permission for me to have a line out, both do this or not do there. Uh, is that, does that line still going to?
Tomorrow's.
Back or are y'all going to postpone that? Uh, so you can get some more.
Tomorrow's line was the purchase of radios or not purchase of radios. That's what tomorrow's line item is. What radios are we going to serve?
Right. About the top or how many?
It, well, what's in the contract?
What's in the contract? Are we, and that's what's in your binder, wrote down by ever. One of these agencies, how much we pay for. Are we buying the radios or not? Is what's on the agenda for tomorrow?
Ask your question. I don't see how in the world we can take an action on that tomorrow. We're not knowing what we don't know.
That's my question. Look, it's, it's, is there, uh. An urgency with Harris? To, to get this done tomorrow, though. So do they lock everything in or can it go down the road?
It's already locked in. It, it's already locked in. We have signed the contract.
And whether y'all vote tomorrow or voting votes tomorrow or not.
The price is locked in from the very get go. I asked Harris, I said, this product on this radio, if we buy. Every one of the radios that's on this list or if we buy one radio, and they said, it's the same price. No matter how many you buy. Now, whether or not they re- remade on their word, that's a different thing. But because I said from the get go, it wasn't this, well, it was part of this port, it was me and Andy. But we were in, in Chad, we didn't know how, we didn't, we didn't know how many radios we're going to buy. I mean, we knew how many we needed for bands that came. But at that time, we didn't know if we were going to buy any other entities, radios or not.
Exactly. If you, if you was to come tomorrow and vote. This is what we're going to buy. Man, that looks really and truly, that puts a whole other infrastructure. Into effect that you've got to continue and do. If you buy the radio, you have to go with this other. You're just listening to the radio and, and know other.
No, we've already signed a contract on that. That's already a done deal.
That's the.
That's a done deal. The others are done deal. What's it matter? Are we going to buy y'all's radio or we, we know we're buying a county radio. That's a get. We're buying a county. Are we going to buy y'all's radios or not? That's the question for tomorrow. That's on the agenda. Are we going to buy y'all's radio or are we not going to buy y'all's radio? That's what's on the agenda for tomorrow.
All right, stay tuned. It will be live streamed. All right. Is there any other business? On the radios?
If not, city official know what's going on.
I do have a few questions. Y'all feel like we need a radio system?
You said we need praise.
All right. Do you feel like the amount of radios out there is a good starter pack to have you functional system?
Could you do with lips?
No.
Okay. That's what, that's what I need to know.
I, that, that's my answer there. I'll Google that on the board. It's just whether, um, our E S D board. Figure out what we're going to do. But we, we, as I expressed, when you kind of, you, we definitely need what you have us, allow us, allocated to us now. That can get us on the road to being able to communicate that.
And Chad, how long are these prices good for?
Through the end of implementation. Once we get the system up and going and working, and we've installed and cut over. That's how, these are good part. Now after that. The base price of the radio is there, but you're going to pay more for programming, more for installation. Installation and programming only counts while we're doing the initial implementation. The radio price itself is going to hold for a little while. And they go over fifteen years.
Seven, seven years. What, what's the deal? How long will it hold?
The price of that?
Yeah.
I'll have to get a confirmation on that.
I would hope for at least the first three years. That would be, just good to try to get that confirmed. What it basically.
We go and we buy additional, uh, mobile for each address and buy more handhelds. Uh, the programming and the installation and this project we've got now, if we do it, say within a month. Uh, or two months, is that going to be guaranteed to get that price?
What they're looking at, what they've told me, another thing we're going to do tomorrow, talk about renting the building, we should have, it's a problem with building. Pretty much through December of next year. If you install in during that window, you should be in this price. After that, you're going to add whatever it costs, you're going to come down and install your radio and program, because that's not going to be part of the implementation process.
They have a question. So. The county is a program operator, we have someone that's going to be trying to deal with program right now, the county operators.
Say again.
Will the county be programming the radios?
The initial installation, help repair the program. Beyond that, we'll take care of ours and y'all take care of your. Now we'll have to provide you a key and then build your program. But the county is not assuming that responsibility unless they decide differently.
All right, we're going to pay for the service contract, who knows, hopefully get a program, we'll be down.
And that's something to consider, guys.
I would, I would like to do that, that, that way we have control over.
And it would be much better if it was able to do it, but don't show up without a radio.
Correct.
Or training someone to.
Training two people to program.
Yeah, we will have the capability to do that. All right, anything else? All right, call a meeting, uh, this meeting is closed or completed at, uh, twelve eighteen. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. You know, Mr. Dirk, he's not designed to do that. What they're talking about, they're talking about, they're talking about. So, did you respond? Are you good for four o'clock tomorrow?
Oh, especially to maintain the hours.
Me back game, right? That's what they're talking about. I just, I just don't have the time to read. Uh, they're talking about. I got to say for the tower. I got, I got a. I, I think he was under misunderstanding when he asked the last question about service contracts, about. Programming radio and all that.
His last question was, in the future, if we buy a new radio, are y'all going to program it far or do we need to help them?
They got a program.
That's what I thought. We can make no commitment to program.
Yeah.
Sorry, and then they ask, well, if we do a maintenance service contract, there should be a food.
Yeah.
It would be better if our guys did program Harris radios.
Yeah.
Because it allows you maintain controls, security, that stuff, right?
Right.
And the radios will be programmed one time or amount of.
Yeah.
They're going to try, new radio was here and there, and again, the truck, your new radio replaced the program, but it's not going to be like original.
Yeah.